Could you call her, please?
Butler?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Lipscomb?
Here.
Obrich?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Thrash?
Here.
Vincento?
Here.
All members are present.
Any thinking? First thing on the agenda is the minutes from the previous meeting. Did not receive their copy of the minutes for that meeting. Does anyone have any comments or questions on those minutes? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to pass those as the official minutes for the July 3rd meeting. Thrash, second?
Second.
Smith? Okay, take a roll call, Boo.
Butler?
Same.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincento?
Okay, the minutes from the July 3rd meeting are official. And we will change the date on the agenda to 23/17. Okay, the first thing on the agenda this evening, we have Mr. and Mrs. Vaughn here this evening. They wanted to address council and propose something that in the way of purchasing a memorial bench and having it placed on city property, and they wanted to get council's input and their permission, if need be, to place this bench, so, could you like to...
Thank you very much for allowing us to come tonight. My name is Kathy Vaughn, my husband is Jeff Vaughn, he knows, I recognize most of you. We lived in the city, we moved into the city in 86, and the first person that actually made me feel very much at home, because I was very lost, was Stumpy. And I was kind of, we were kind of, over the years, he did a lot for Jeff for the business. Whenever we needed anything done, we could always call Stumpy, and Stumpy would round up a crew of people to see that whatever needed to be done was done. His wife was probably the second or third person I met, because she worked for Haynesworth, who used to be the one and only trash collector in the city, and she was just the sweetest person. And that was back in the day, and I'm dating myself, where you used to carry your $5 or $6 over to the office to pay your trash bill every month. So, and we lived in the neighborhood of South Park, just kind of behind there, and my kids used to play, and Stumpy would wave at them when they'd come up to play. So I was kind of, we were kind of shocked when they put benches and things over there. I mean, Stumpy lived right across the road, that there wasn't a bench done for him, but then we found out later that that was really not anything that the council had done. So Jeff and I decided that we wanted to buy a bench, like downstairs, the one that's in front of the police department, and dedicate it in memory of Stumpy and his wife Polly. Recognize that it's probably not a good place to put it at the park, just because of the mowing and things that have to go on over at the park, it would need to be moved a lot. So it's up to the street department, the rec department, you folks here decide where you want it, and then we'll come up with, depending upon where it is, the color and get it ordered, if it's in, if you give us permission to do that. Thanks.
Okay, anybody have any comments they'd like to address to her or discussion?
Jim, I'd just like to say thank you, Kathy, on behalf of myself and sure everyone in town for your hard work of council churches, food pantry, your events. Very important, and I thank you.
Does anyone, Mike?
No, I just want to say I think it's a great idea.
I do too.
Does it need council approval?
Well, that's what I'm not sure of. When they first contacted me Friday, I hadn't talked to Elizabeth, I wanted to make sure that if it did need council approval, that it could be brought up to see me eye dog, whether it has to be approved.
I don't believe it does have to be approved.
How about the location?
And you know, she's...
You guys can decide where you want it.
Do you think that would be the best place?
Like I said, South Park would be good, but at the same time, you know, it's a small park, and just having to move it or mow around it is going to take time, and so maybe, and maybe it would be better out somewhere where there were more people. I mean, it's not just people in that neighborhood that knew Stumpy, I mean, Stumpy was, you know, St. Clair's son.
I'm just wondering, the amphitheater. I was thinking that. The amphitheater, is that an idea?
Whatever you guys want to do, and we'll just, you know, we'll work around where you want it, and whatever color and style it has to be. That sounds good.
Thank you.
Well, I was just, I wondered if they got permission to put the other benches at South Park. I don't think they did, did they?
No, they didn't.
I don't think they did. I think they were just, well, because they're not on, actually on city...
They're on city property, yeah.
I honestly, I don't remember, I remember Bill coming to the meeting and bringing up the benches, but I don't remember whether permission was...
No, there was no formal permission.
Okay. Does anybody have any opinions on where it might be the place to put it, or to kind of give them an idea?
I was just gonna, no, I'm ready. So, the amphitheater seems like it has a lot more people with the summer concerts, I'm just wondering if it wouldn't, if that wouldn't be a better area there?
Like I said, I mean, we're not particular about where to put it, and, you know, it's, we want to, we want people to see it, but we also don't want it to be in the way of, I mean, you got to mow, you know, Jeremy, I'm not sure how they mow and stuff.
We can work around it.
So we can put wood shavings or just under it, yes.
Well, if it's, if it would actually be one of the ones, the metal ones, like if it's downstairs, we would either do a concrete slab under it, or a piece of stone, and make sure it's bolted down, so it doesn't lock away.
Okay, so I guess if it doesn't need council's approval, it's just you guys decide what you want to do, what kind of bench you want, and then get with Jeremy and see where the best place to put it would be?
There's some more questions, Jeremy?
Not questions, but I think his team Michigan colors are a really good place this part.
That was good, not withstanding his, but there's, there's an actual big joke behind that.
Right.
I talked to his daughter.
He was in the diner every day.
Well, that's what I kept saying, it would be perfect at the diner, but then, you know, Tom would have to get involved, because it's on Main Street.
I'm just saying, Michigan colors, I think would be a fantastic start if you're trying to choose colors.
I think it would be...
I don't think it would be there very long.
Not sure.
It would become red real quick.
Okay, so I guess you guys are good to go and decide what you want to do, and...
We'll work with Jeremy.
Would you figure out, get with Jeremy and see where the best place is?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I have no other correspondence. Does anyone here have any? Okay, we'll move on to the reports. Mayor, do you have a report key?
Yes, I do, thank you very much, and since my computer is kind of being a little wonky, it's going to be a little bit extemporaneous, but as you can see, pictures up here, I was in Columbus all last week for the John and Annie Glenn School of Leadership, it was called the Public Leadership Academy, and I was one of five mayors selected, they had five mayors from all across the state, five township trustees, five council people, five, let's see, five school board members, and five commissioners. So there were 25 of us there all week, and it was an absolutely wonderful opportunity to talk to other mayors, to find out some of the things that they would implement, and there were people there from huge cities, and there was a girl there from a village who had, I think, 1,500 people, but it's amazing how we all had basically the same problems that came up. And they talked to us, and here I did write some of this down, we were in class all week at 8:30 to 5:00 every day, and I've not sat like that in a long time, that was tough, but they had communication, couple hours, smart growth strategies, a crisis response scenario, which was very interesting, we were given the scenario, and we had to try to come up with a solution, working with businesses, and creating an effective network of support, meaning for the administration and for the cities. We just, we also toured the State House, which if anyone has not been there, like I had not, it is beautiful. Has anybody been to the Ohio State House? Christie, yes, I would expect, but it is truly beautiful, and it gives you a real sense of awe about our state. Makes me proud to be an Ohioan. We also mentored high school students who were involved in the John Glenn School for the high school kids, and we got to talk to them a lot, and, you know, the most common question is, why did you ever run for mayor? And it's like, there was an issue that I was very passionate about, and, you know, that's, that's what you have to do. You don't do it because you want the accolades of, oh, hi, Mrs. Mayor, or whatever. It's about finding something deep in your heart you care about, and going through, and if our, if our country will be in the hands of those kids, we will be in good shape. We spent time sharing information, ideas again with each other, and this isn't worth 50 cents and a cup of coffee, but I was elected governor of our class informally, so it doesn't really mean anything, but it was, it was nice to be acknowledged by my peers. Prior to that, though, prior to being gone last week, one of the biggest things, and I know TJ will probably address it too, we had a laminar hood installed in the basement for the police. Does anybody know what that is?
Is that things for drugs?
Yes, and when I was working in pharma, and the big hospitals, every big hospital would have a laminar hood, which is reverse flow, so that when they were mixing chemotherapy, which is very toxic, the pharmacist or the techs did not get sick, and I started whining about that pretty early into me winning. It's like, when the police told me, they were, they were repackaging evidence on the floor in the police room, I was like, oh my God, it was fentanyl, so we made, I kept making a lot of noise to him, and he understood why we needed it, and it just got installed last week. I'm really proud of that. Let's see, what else? Oh, and I went to community days the night before I left to go to Columbus, it was wonderful, and I've told Eric, he did a great job, that was a good call the week before, even though the weather got nice, you have people concerned about ruining band instruments and electronic stuff, but it was really nice that Sunday night, so he did a great job. That's, that's everything.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Anybody have any comments or questions for Mayor?
Just again, congratulations on being selected, to that leadership school, it really is, like I think, an honor, so just congratulations.
I did not realize what a big honor it was till I got there, and I guess it's a pretty big deal, and I am now an alumni of Ohio State, they told us, so I'm getting rid of my blue and gold yet, I still have my pink ski cap and my blue and white Mountaineer thing, but we did get diplomas, we had a graduation, I mean, it was, it was really impressive, and I'm absolutely thrilled I had that opportunity. It'll make me, well, I was going to say more benevolent dictator, but I'm just teasing. No, it taught so much about how to, to interact as a leader, and it was very gratifying that a lot of what we do, we are already implementing. We had to take three tests, talking about your leadership style, I came up pretty high on them, like awareness, being able to communicate with people, and I think that was my 30 years in sales, but it was gratifying to see that there's a lot we're doing right, so, anyway, I'll be fine, thank you.
Your only problem is when Ohio State plays West Virginia, then you're going to...
I did that one time, and Ohio State was screaming them, I went in white and gold jersey, and put my blue and gold, or my, a white and red, yeah.
Anybody else have questions for Mayor? Okay, we'll move on. Next on the agenda, Service Director Jeremy Greenblatt.
Good evening, Councilor. I'm going to ask Jacob to pass this information out to council members here. On the other day, I got a need, or actually a phone call from the Ohio EPA. Was a very interesting discussion on some of the things here, and this is what's being passed out to council now. So, this is probably going to be one of the most important issues that I've ever discussed with council, so it needs, let's just say it has to be, you know, dealt with very delicately. So, we got an NOV from the Ohio EPA, which, if any of you know, it's a notice of violation, that's the first copy that is in that report that you just got handed. So, basically what had happened was, here's some history on it. Since January of 2021, the Ohio Water Development Authority has requested that we close out the loan for the Dorothy tank. This is the water tank out by Commons Crossing, the Dorothy Lane. When I started here, we were trying to figure out how the workings of the new tank that was designed and installed under the last administration, so we called the engineers in to discuss the tank. We asked them about the tank and how it's supposed to function. We didn't really get a straight answer, they noted that the tanks like this are built all over the country, and I stated, yes, in Florida where it's flat. I asked what's, I asked why the style of tank was chosen, and they noted that the former administration told them to do it that way. I then asked if they had completed a hydraulic analysis of the existing system, they said that they had suggested it, but were told by the former administration that it was too expensive. We informed them that we were not going to finish paying the outstanding invoice, balance of their invoice, till after a time that the tank would be useful. Since that time, maybe two, two times they've reached out to us, and each suggestion, each suggestion to make the tank run smoother was met with the same answer, we've already tried that. In January of this year, the OWDA, which is the loan authority, reached out again. After discussions with the law director, the finance director, the mayor, and myself, we decided to close out the loan and notify OWDA the situation. OWDA then reached out to the Ohio EPA and asked about the situation. The EPA investigated and requested some additional information from the city, we sent them, we sent them what information we had, including the dates noted on the drawing sets, the elevations, the tanks, everything we had. Ohio EPA noted that the PTI, which is a permit install for the tank, was not revised or obtained when the last administration, their engineers decided to move the tank from the proposed elevation to the current as-built elevation. So despite the fact that the tank still would have been too low, even if it was installed on top of the hill, it was decided to save about $350,000 on roadways and retaining walls, and the tank was moved. The Ohio EPA has unofficially informed the city of the two options that they feel could resolve the issue. Number one, rebuild the tank. Number two, mothball the existing tank and hope that it can be used in the future. The Ohio EPA will not dictate how we need to respond to the NOV, but they're waiting for our answer. After discussion, discussing this with our engineer, we agree, agree with these as being probably our only two options. My opinion is the second, the second option is a safe gamble, but there is no guarantee that it'll still work. We've been trying to do this with the tank since I've been here. The new tank was inspected last year and has several, several OSHA issues and requires additional work with it. That is on the pages in the adjoining thing after that, that's the inspection report there, so if you flip through to the first tab there on page six, there is a AWWA issue with the tank. Page seven, there's an OSHA violation, but that's just a sign, that's an easy one. Page nine is another OSHA violation, talking about platform and railings above and guards. And then the other one was the interior ladder, SCO has an OSHA issue with it too. So that's in there from this last report that was done. And then in the last page, you'll see a graphic representation of the tanks themselves. So if you can see, the light bulb tank that we have here, the witch's hat elevations, those are at the same overflow elevations, 1,384 feet. The bases of the tanks are about the same, one's at 1359, one's at 1347. The new tank, as it was first originally proposed, would have had an overflow of 1320, which is 60 feet below the overflow of the other ones, but unfortunately, due to other circumstances and issues, it was actually lowered 45 feet below what's there. So the overflow of that tank right now is at 1275. The new tank inspected, as I mentioned, went over, the amount of the work is not too expensive, the overall cost of the projects, but my question is, why does the new tank need any work at all? It's four years old. A WAG estimate, and for those that don't know, WAG is a wild-ass guess, on opinions of cost, option number one, we're talking $200,000, $250,000 to demo the existing tank, probably about another 3.5 million to build a new tank. So to basically save $350,000 to the city and its citizens, we're going to have to spend almost $6 million to correct the issue, the 2.2 million original for the original tank construction, the 3.5 million to rebuild and demo costs. Engineers, our engineers suggest to purchase additional land to build a new tank to save on the elevated tank costs. At this time, I'm going to request an executive session to discuss possible litigation.
Okay, is this the section for potential litigation?
That is, Ohio Revised Code 121.22G3.
Okay, there is a request for a executive session to discuss this.
Is there an opportunity to ask questions before the executive session, or since it is requested, we need to vote on it now? Yeah, we need to vote on it now, and go into executive, and then bring our discussion back to the report afterwards. Okay, and so it's council that has to make the motion?
Yes.
22.2G? It's 121.22G3. So I make a motion to go to the executive session for pending litigation under Ohio Revised Code something?
Give a second, give a second. Take a roll call, Boo.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincento?
Yes.
Okay, it's passed, we'll go to executive session again. I will ask people, please leave any movement, connection device, devices out of the executive session. I'm sure...
How many of our meetings do we have?
Okay, I will entertain a motion to leave executive session. I'll second it.
I'll second it.
We need to vote on that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Executive session.
Butler? Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincento?
Yes.
All members are finished.
Okay, we are officially back into regular council meeting, and during the executive session, no action was taken. Okay, Jeremy, do you have anything else on your report, or does anybody have any questions that they wish to address with him at this time?
So you had talked about this, this report and the notice of violation, and we actually have two options from the EPA, which is to build a new tank?
Rebuild the tank.
Rebuild the tank, or to disconnect or mothball this, so I feel like the, I, I think we could build a new tank at this point. I think there's more information that we need to have, so I think the disconnecting or mothballing, it seems to be the better option at this point. I don't know what my colleagues think.
I agree.
Agreed.
I agree.
We need to vote to mothball, or just leave it up to...
We can, you can do a motion to... We don't need a motion, right? We just wanted input. Right.
Okay, no other questions for the service director? Okay, we'll move on. Police Board, Jane?
Okay, I'll be very brief, just want to bring up what the mayor had brought up about the hood. And not make it too complicated, the ventilation hood protects our officers, which we sorely needed. We keep Narcan available around our station, for, I'm sure what you all know, the dangers that go with our job and what we bring in. I would also like to mention, it is located in the basement, and we would like to invite all of you to check out the basement and see the transformation that we have made down there. We now have a facility for our safety, our, our physical well-being, great attention to our mental well-being, and overall, things are greatly improved in our department. Things are very good, we're making a big difference in this town, and on behalf of our department, I would like to thank service director and the mayor for always supporting us, and all of council for supporting them in between. On a daily basis, we get that support, and it has made a huge difference, and it is the reason that right now, we're probably one of the few, if not the only, department in the entire Ohio Valley that doesn't have vacancies and begging for employees. Check that out, we're probably the only one. So thank you, thank you all for the support you give us, and for that, we're doing our best to make a better, safer town for you, and I can tell you, as somebody that's been an employer for 25-plus years, we are making a difference. Things are happening, and you have a better town because of it. So thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody have any comments, Beth?
So I just have two comments. I think it's probably not just in Ohio Valley, I think it's nationally, that law enforcement numbers are down, so I think that it extends beyond the Ohio Valley, that you guys can say that this is one of the departments that doesn't have that vacancy. And I was just wondering the status of, appreciate the invitation, I'm certainly taking you up on that, but the, the status of the dog wash, is that done yet?
That's next on the schedule.
Okay.
We are currently, pro, I believe we're the only ones in the valley to have the unit that we were talking about, and we invite any department to use anything we have. We always have, we always will, we get great support from that. The dog wash will be another show of leadership in the valley, where we will, after that is all installed and working, we will invite every canine in the entire valley to use our facilities, which is very good in relationships between departments. We depend on a lot of departments, a lot of departments depend on us. One more thing, I'm sorry. I don't know if you guys knew this or not, but we had a live hand grenade turn into the police department the other day from an attic of a house.
Nobody knew that. Nobody knew that yet.
No, I'm telling you.
Actually, two.
There were two.
There were two.
It was handled, the Columbus Bomb Squad came to town, retrieved it, and all was well. So, it's happening here, just like it is everywhere. It was not a terrorist-type thing, it was somebody whose husband had died, and she found it in his belongings.
That was a phone call, I love kidding you in Columbus, can you call me right now? But I'm tagging on to what TJ said, Matt had told me last week, he said, we have reached out to all the other police departments, just like TJ said, and invite them to use the laminar hood, or any of the drone, or anything else, and we talked about it, and he said, you know, the life that we save by lending them equipment could come back to save our lives, and it's a really good point, thank you. And it's a really good point, thank you very much.
Any other comments, questions, police? Thank you, TJ. Okay, we'll move on to finance director. Annette is not here. Let's move on to planning and zoning, Mr. Murphy.
Oh, thank you, Jim. A few things for council tonight, just to bring you up to date. Horizon, a telecommunications company, is proposing new fiber at three locations within the city. They are requesting permission to contact to our city electric poles. Don Smithberger has reviewed their proposal and he has okayed that. They still have to submit the final application information. You may recall, Horizon has been before city council on previously in regard to weather locations. Council ultimately does give the final approval on these. There's no ordinance necessary. Hopefully, they will be before city council soon, but I'll get information to you before then. The Comcast Wheeling Antenna Easement has been finalized and signed by all parties. I'm working with Elizabeth now on that. She will be recording the document. You may recall, there was a fifty-foot easement already through what is called the Wheeling Antenna property. Easement runs between Plaza West and the new seventeen-and-a-half acre development site, the west side of the city. Previously, it did not include electrics, so we had that added. Comcast was fine with that addition, so everything's been signed, it just has to be reported. I have had some questions about North Sugar Street and that paving project. Just to summarize things, this project is about two years away. In summary, ODOT had what's called the Local Roads Boil and Shale Grant Program. If successful, an applicant could be approved for as much as five-hundred-thousand dollars in outright grant funds. The city applied, it was approved for five-hundred-thousand dollars. Anything more than this amount would be the responsibility of the city. The only streets that would be eligible for the project, according to their grant, were local roads. In addition, the eligible roads had to meet certain thresholds regarding the number of trucks and the number of vehicles using the street, and also have a certain number of well pads within a five-mile radius of that street. North Sugar Street was the local street that, that higher thresholds required. Usually, they have, the more points you get, and this particular grant depended on, you know, the number of trucks. And if you kind of fell below those maximum thresholds, it wouldn't be a good thing. So that street did meet those thresholds and we applied for the grant, we got it. A note about just some positive things, I always like to bring that up. Ken, Lance Schultz, he's a former Belmont County resident, who is now a consultant, worked for the county, was in the area. He grew up in the area and has been in community planning around Columbus for about thirty years. He met with me regarding the state of planning in Belmont County, and he was giving our city kudos. He said after being away thirty years and driving around St. Clairsville, he thinks that's even improved and, you know, as time has gone by. He thought that the planning that we do through subdivision guidelines, the planning code, property maintenance, historic district guidelines, really are kind of what set us apart. He said almost like when he enters the city, when he drives into it, it's, I don't want to be this dramatic, but it's almost like there's a line drawn there and he just noticed the difference. So that's, that's always good to hear. Don't take my word for it. He said if council members wanted to call him and discuss it with him, he certainly would be welcome for that. I just would like to end on that note that, you know, what we do here is a community, council-wise, mayor-wise, administration-wise, you know, just everybody kind of plays a part in making it a nice community, so. And on that note, if you have questions about anything else, always feel free to ask me now or give me a call.
Thanks. Anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you very much, Jim. Okay, we'll move on to the council committees, finance, Mr. Cincenzo.
Oh, yes, we had a finance committee tonight, meeting tonight, and Annette was able to be there for that. And she went over some of the figures with us. Our appropriations are thirty-five percent, very good. Revenue is forty-eight percent. We did, she did talk about the auditors' run last week for three days, and the audit is, is looking good, it's on track. Negotiations are on track, looking good. We also discussed just different, different projects and stuff going on. And right now, the status, we're, we're right on track. That's all I have.
Thank you, Don. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Cincenzo? Okay, we'll move on to utilities. Ms. Sotler, do you have any?
Do not have a report tonight. The next meeting will be August seventh, because we have an extra.
August seventh?
Yeah, because we have, the last Monday is the thirty-first, so the first Monday will be August seventh, six fifteen.
Everybody already knows.
Anybody have any questions? Here's one to police.
Yeah, police committee met a couple of weeks ago. And we start out the meeting every time by asking Matt if they need anything at all. And if they do, we'll try to help, help get that. But one of the things that we talked about were, were the cameras. Matt's been checking into getting cameras for the city. And that, right now, that's on hold. He's gonna check around for some better options. Also, discussed the hood, it was mentioned several times here tonight. Discussed the dogs, how they're doing and how the dog wash is coming. Talked about the drone, update on that. And as TJ mentioned and the mayor, we do allow other law enforcement to use our facilities, kind of like, you know, our good fortune, whatever is ours is yours. Matt said we do loan the drone out and, like TJ said, we're gonna let people come in, use the dog wash and possibly the hood, I don't know. But that's all I have to report, but I think that you're excellent.
Okay, Matt. Anybody other comments or questions? Okay, move on to streets, north side. Mike, do you have anything on north side streets?
No report.
South side streets, JC, do you have anything on south side?
No report.
Anything on safety?
No report.
Building grounds?
We'll have our monthly meeting tomorrow at three o'clock in the small conference room over there. And tomorrow, three o'clock is the meeting. Any council members are welcome to come. But for the building grounds committee, one of the things on the agenda will be to schedule the meeting with the junior sports, com, you know, what? Junior sports group, right? That we're supposed to have like an annual meeting with them. So that was just one of the, that, that's not tomorrow, but we'll schedule that tomorrow as part of our meeting. And then discussing other topics that are necessary to discuss tomorrow.
Okay, Andy?
Something I failed to mention, but I wanted to let you all know. I've received an invitation, council's welcome to come Wednesday, the nineteenth, which will be this Wednesday. Trinity is gonna do the groundbreaking at ten AM. That's very good news, so I will be there. And if anyone else wants to go, it's out by now.
I just, I had one other thing, I don't know if this is building grounds, but the, the water fountain at the bike trail was not working for a minute. I'm hoping that's solved?
We bought a new pump for it, so it should be working now. It was not working the day of the twenty-fifth anniversary. But we were working on that. So if it is not, please let me know and I will have the guys make sure that they get it fixed again.
Or if you could check to let me know if it was working?
Yes.
That would be beautiful.
I can do that too, but I never go anywhere, so I'm, I'm here all the time.
Make a phone call, ask those guys.
I can ask, yes.
Thank you so much.
Anything else on building grounds? Okay, we'll move on to planning commission. Kristy, did anything?
I have nothing to report other than the groundbreaking ceremony Wednesday. Sorry to interrupt. I edit my calendar. Yeah.
Okay, we'll move on to fire district. Lynn, did you have anything?
Yes, our meeting is actually tomorrow morning, eight fifteen, at Firehouse.
Anybody have any questions for Lynn on fire district? Okay, we'll move on to recreation. Kristy?
Okay. Eric wanted to say thank you to all who helped during the community day. It was a huge success. I was out of town, but I saw a lot of pictures of that. Keep a Cool Summer Festival is July twenty-ninth. There's two flyers passed out, two bands, food trucks. It's a free event at the amphitheater beginning at, the first band starts at five forty-five. I think that event, is that at four o'clock also, does anyone know?
The Keep a Cool says five on the flag.
Okay, oh, okay, five o'clock, starts at five. First band goes on at five forty-five, next band goes on at eight. The kids' fishing tournament registration is now open. That is for kids ages three to sixteen. You can register online on the website. I believe the cost is five dollars. The catfishing registration is also open. There are prizes. It takes place six PM Friday, August eleventh, and it will end Saturday morning, August twelfth. If you're a St. Clairville resident, the fee is fifteen dollars. Non-residents, twenty dollars. You can call the rec center for, if you have any questions. They are taking registration for girls' volleyball, open to grades three through six. Registration is open for flag football. It is open to everyone in grades K through six. Registration is open for boys and girls' baseball and softball fall league. No ages on that.
Third grade.
Third grade?
And under.
Okay, I'm sure it's on the, on the rec center's webpage. And the rec department will be hosting a softball tournament at the junior sports fields this Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. All the information for all of these can be found online at the website or by giving the rec department a phone call.
Okay, thank you, Kristy. Anybody have any questions?
Sorry, and the next record meeting is Thursday at five PM at the rec center.
Okay, anybody have any questions or comments for Kristy on that? Okay, also, I attended community days also, and it was just, it turned out to be a great evening. Tremendous crowd, great fireworks display, and the bands were awesome and I think well-received by all the public. That's the biggest crowd I've seen down here for a good while. It just turned out pretty nice, so hats off there. Okay, we'll move on to park district. Lynn, do you have anything on park district?
No report, but the park board did want me to thank the city for waiving the sewage fee.
That's gonna save them some money, I'm sure, if they could use.
Yeah, nothing else involved in the city.
Okay, at this point, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. Lynn, do you have any, we don't have any ordinances today?
We do not have any ordinances or resolutions tonight. However, at the next meeting, we will have the one to put the police renewal levy on the ballot. And I believe the deadline to get it to the board of elections is August ninth. If it is before that, we may have to have a special meeting. But with our meeting being on the seventh, we should be okay to get it to them by the night, so.
So it'll have to be an emergency?
Okay, anybody have any other questions for the law director? Okay, one of the things not on the agenda, periodically, this discussion comes up and Beth wanted to have a little bit of discussion in reference to the policy, which is actually a city ordinance on who can address council and when and what the criteria is. Beth, you wanna?
Yes, thank you. I just had to ask Jacob, and he graciously obliged, to get everybody copy in front of him of the resolution number twenty-sixteen twenty-six. I just wonder if, I mean, I have, I guess I just have some concerns. I don't expect anybody to have any kind of decision, but maybe to take the next couple of weeks to think about it. Like, I know they're public meetings and I want the, the public to be able to address council. I mean, I appreciate that we have them on the agenda from an organizational point of view, but if I look at this, just to kind of, you know, this is just me, so I mean, whether or not we want to change it, I mean, I'm just bringing up my concerns. Like, number two on it, it's a written summary, I just think it should be a statement. Like, it's, it's good to know what somebody's coming to talk to us about, so we could kind of be prepared. So that, that makes sense to me. But number three, an issue that, an issue cannot be brought before council, which has been discussed at a previous meeting, and the issue must be of such nature importance. So that, that paragraph, just gives me a little bit of concern because if we're reading something, actually have three opportunities, three ratings, so they could have discussed it and came and told us what they thought the first time, then it could be the second time, the third time. I guess I think people should be able to, to express it multiple times. You know, I mean, I think there's, there's a balance there, right? There's a point where like, okay, the decision's been made and so it could be maybe enough at some point, I don't know. I don't know what that point is, but I just feel like you should be able to, to kind of, to state your opinion a couple of times. I guess this is where I'm at on that. And number four, I mean, I get that if there's twenty people here that want to talk about an issue, that it could lengthen the meeting, right? But I also think that if twenty people feel passionate about something, maybe twenty people get to say something. You know, maybe it's not five minutes, maybe it's two minutes. But I just, I guess that's what is bothering me a little bit about rethinking about this resolution. So I guess I kind of get the sign-in up, because it gives some order, but I just feel like if you got something to say, you should be able to say it and that multiple people got to say it. I think you gotta say it, they, they get to say it too. And then the section two, like, I don't think that if we did this again, I wouldn't ask for emergency language, right? Like, I think we should read it three times and if you want to come talk about it three times, I guess that's my whole point. And then I think, you know, I think that we, we have, and, and maybe this is a separate part of this, but there has to be a decorum also, right? Like, one person talks at a time. And you can't be mean-spirited and call people names and you gotta act a, just a certain way. I don't know if that goes in here, if, if, if it's part of it or not, but that's just what I want people to, like, or, you know, I mean, that's what I'm thinking about with this resolution and asking council to kind of revisit it for some of those, I guess.
Okay, the only thing, I'll defer to Elizabeth here in a couple of minutes. I've tried best I can to follow what the ordinance says. I don't think you can have an ordinance and ignore it when you feel like ignore it and follow it when you want to. The ordinance could actually be done away with, could be modified or changed, I'm sure.
Amendment, you can rescind it.
The only thing, which you guys can discuss at any time and see what your thoughts are on it, as far as the open meetings, where people can attend the meetings. It has actually been to the high supreme court and actually in the United States Supreme Court decision that people do have a right to attend open meetings, but they do not have a right to speak unless they're given permission. So if, if you're gonna change it or amend it or change it, we need to make sure that we discuss some guidelines of what time limits, how, what they can talk. And we also need to remember that some of the things that council may be approached by the citizens is that the way the government is split up with administrative and legislative, council only has so much power to do so many things. So again, if they're allowing to talk, but it should be something, in my opinion, that council can take action on and do something about to just turn it into a, a, a meeting where somebody's gonna complain, which I understand people want to complain at times, but it has to be something that council can adjust. And that's right now legislative and that's in the charter. So I'm not saying it shouldn't be changed or couldn't be changed or modified, but this is something you need to consider, all of the aspects of the rules, regulations, time limits, and, because somebody could get up there and talk for two minutes and say a- for two minutes and say a lot and other people could get up there for an hour and say nothing. So, just kind of kick it around, see what you think. Does anybody else have any comments on the, the ordinance as it is or?
I don't know. I think that was the reason we voted to have them tell what they were gonna speak about in advance.
Right.
You know, so we didn't have that. I mean, because if they come in about their utility bill, we can't.
Right, right. It, it, it wasn't a lot of people, unfortunately, in some places they're, they're not set up with the charter and they have town hall meetings where you can discuss anything you want. We really, as a council, could only take action on what we have authority to take action on. And as much as you can have, I think the procedure was supposed to be to, if you have a complaint about something, go to your councilman, complain to them, and then they could bring it to the meeting and say, "We've got this issue." But again, it's something that they have to be able to take action on and have some say in. I mean, it's, uh, it's specifically by the charter broken down on who's got what authority and, uh, the, the mayor and the service director can't override our authority. We can't override what the charter gives them. So, we have to make sure that we just don't turn it into a, I'm not saying it couldn't be changed or modified, but just we need to consider what we're gonna do to, to modify the or, I don't, we just modify what's there, amend it, or just?
We can amend it.
So that's something to consider. You guys want to think about that a little bit and see what you think. And I know this comes up periodically, but it's just, I know when people are upset, they want to talk and it just, it, that happens.
I, I just have a comment just at first glance, and I know I'm, I'm kind of new on council, but I did actually review this when I first took council and I was going through some of the resolutions and ordinances. This didn't sit really well with me. I understand the point of, of much of what is in here. The time limit absolutely is necessary, but I think it could be tweaked. I, I think it could be tweaked a little bit.
Well, that's, yeah, that's council decision. They can do that.
Right, okay.
I mean, it's, you know, it's just, if they want to get together and discuss something and propose it to the law director, she can drop amendments or whatever and it could be passed and, and change however council is, it's council's meeting. I, I only run the meeting based on what council wants to do. So, if you guys want to talk about that among yourselves or whatever, have a special meeting to discuss it or something, but kind of kick it around and see what you think.
And I would also just like to remind the public, I, I guess, you know, we all have our phone numbers on the website and if citizens have a concern that they want to bring to council's attention, every single council person here is very open to communication, you know, but we can't just read things on Facebook, you know? It needs to come to our personal attention. And I think, I know every member on this council does their very best to advocate for the citizens and so I would just remind them of that.
Anybody other comments? Okay, I do want to kind of throw out just something for my own personal. I've been having some issues with my email for the city, so if I don't respond to you as quickly with an email as I normally do, kind of bear with me because right now it's acting up and I'm hoping when Jen gets back, we're gonna be able to kind of straighten it out. But I do get them, but it's gotta be, sometimes it's delete, but I, well, I can get it, so. Other than that, anybody have any other comments or questions? Okay, at this time, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion.
He's adjourned.